Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Rulin.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Smith, and Chair Brown is absent this evening.
Next item, special orders of business. We have no special orders of business. Item five is our minutes. We have minutes from the study session of February 3, 2016, and the planning commission meeting of February 3, 2016. Is there a motion regarding the study session minutes, or a request for changes?
I will move we adopt the minutes of the regular study session of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission of February 3, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Eggleston. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. And the minutes from the planning commission meeting of February 3.
I will move we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission of February 3, 2016.
Second.
Moved by Crandall, seconded by Commissioner Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Item six, oral and written communication. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and the city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent calendar, of which there is none, and moving on to item eight, public hearings. The public hearings process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Item 8A is 200 Avenue La Cuesta Cultural Heritage Permit 15-256, Hinch Residence. Public hearing to consider request to demolish the majority of an existing house and construct a new house, detached garage and pool house that are adjacent to historic house. The project is located at 200 Avenue La Cuesta in the residential low zoning district.
So.
Good evening, planning commissioners. John Champagne, the case planner for the project. This is the Hinch Residence. It's a request for a minor cultural, or I'm sorry, Cultural Heritage Permit, because the project is located adjacent to historic structure, as you can see here at 199 Avenue La Cuesta, which is across the street. This is located within the residential low zoning designation and within the second over residential overlay. Project is proposing a major remodel in addition to an existing single-story house to replace it with a new two-story house. The project would also include a detached garage, pool house, and a new wall. Here's the site plan of the project. So it is located on that long sweeping corner there of Avenue La Cuesta. The house would be generally in its existing location, and the two detached structures would be located at the rear of the property, adjacent to the pool. Project is adjacent to the historic property, as I previously mentioned. It's 100 feet away from the structure, and I also provided just a street view to give you the context in terms of the proximity to the historic structure. The architecture was reviewed by staff and the design review subcommittee. Design review subcommittee had comments related to incorporating more of a traditional Spanish colonial revival design, which resulted in simplifying some of the elevations, as well as providing more vertically oriented windows, and some additional landscaping along the frontage that is adjacent to the historic structure, as well as the replacement of the vinyl fence with a new proposed stucco wall. Staff believes that the project can meet the required findings, and that the project is conforming to all of the city's development standards for the RL2 zoning designation. The architecture of the house is compatible with the adjacent historic structure, as well as the neighborhood, and the house should not have any negative impacts to the historic structure, given its compatible architectural design, as well as it's located across the street and 100 feet of separation. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have. And I'd just like to note that there are two letters that were provided to you from the adjacent property owners. So staff is prepared to answer any questions you have regarding those as well.
Very good. Do you have a question for staff?
I do. Could you clarify, since this is for a Cultural Heritage Permit, what is at play here, and would you go through the findings that are required to approve it?
Yes. So the key components of this are, one, it's required to have a Cultural Heritage Permit because it's adjacent to a historic structure. If it was one lot removed, they would just be coming in with normal building permits. The key finding that needs to be made for this project is that it doesn't have any negative physical or visual impacts to the historic structure.
Commissioner Wu.
John, I have a question. Just had enough time to quickly glance over this comments from adjacent property owner, or from the property owner of the historic structure. There was some challenge about how do we measure the building height. Not completely sure. Lots of details. Can you clarify on that, how we measure the building height?
In this area town, it's measured from original grade. So the project does have a height analysis that staff reviewed to ensure that it does conform to the height requirements. Some of the heights that are measured are, you know, the finished floors for the first and second floor, as well as some of the grades of the street. The applicants provided a detailed survey that shows the topography lines, as well as the location of the building, to assist staff in the review of the project. Staff has determined that the project is in conformance of the required height standards for this zone, which is 25 feet. And so, the elevations, you know, I went through the plans with the neighbors that provided the letter, and, I mean, it's, the plan as proposed conforms to the height requirements for the zone.
Since the historic structure was built in 1920-something, so it's been about 80-something years, does the city have a record of original grading in that area?
There is some evidence of original grading. We also have done, you know, walked the property to see if there are any retaining walls that are manipulating the grade of the site, either adding fill or cut, and also looking at adjacent grades to determine if there was any significant manipulation to the site, and that was not, that wasn't discovered to have any manipulation of that area. And that was thoroughly discussed by staff and the applicant to ensure that that was the case.
Thank you. And Michael?
Yes. I have three questions. First is, can you confirm whether or not there are protected views in this area?
There are not protected views.
Okay. And could you just run down maybe a short list of, to give us some examples of potential impacts to historic structures? So we're requiring Cultural Heritage Permit to ensure that there are no impacts. So what would some of those impacts potentially?
Potentially, you could have massing impacts. We typically see those, and really dig down deep in the design of projects when they're adjacent. You know, we see a lot of duplexes being proposed in the RM zones that are next to small adjacent historic structures. So we look at providing architectural features to offset, you know, provide offsets, you know, whether it be second-story covered balconies versus, you know, solid mass through there, breaks in the horizontal plane of the building, those types of architectural elements. So primarily, as well as making sure that the structure isn't impeding any significant line of sight to the historic building. That's typically seen more when you have adjacent properties. Some historic properties are set further back, whereas a new structure may kind of be trying to meet more of the development standards. So those are other issues. But it's primarily the massing, the line of sight to the historic structure are the key components that we review.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? If not, we'll invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come up and address the commission if they'd like.
I'm Matt McCarrwitch. I'm the project designer. And we worked with the design review and tried to accommodate, you know, their findings, as far as being very specific about the style of the Holy Hanson style, which is a little more rustic than maybe the original design was, might be something that would be seen in Santa Barbara. Little more elaborate details. We backed those details off and just sort of kept it in line with other homes that are on that street. I think there's 243 up the street is a very similar home. And actually, I used that home as a concept for this one, just trying to maintain a fluid design theme throughout that street. And so size, massing, and we actually just came straight up off of the existing footprint of the house. So we're not pushing out. We haven't tried to extend the house to the side setbacks, or, you know, it just, we're just keeping it within that same sort of frame of what the original house, as it sits. And so, you know, we didn't have to do a Spanish Revival House there, but that was, you know, they love that style, and are, you know, immersed in. The owners, you know, really want to see something that would be in line completely with a historic home. So that's what we tried to achieve.
Thank you. Michael, you had a question for the applicant?
Yes, very nice design. And I agree with you, and for other reasons, such as just overall continuity with the architectural theme on that street. I think it's going to blend in nicely. Can you confirm, and I could look at the drawing real quick, but just real quick, is this a smooth stucco?
I've done a number of these homes, and I like to make it have some texture to it, and it's not manufactured, just more contemporary texture. This is a historical, where we use a heavier sand, and we don't use a color coat. We actually just use the brown coat, and it has undulation to it that's put in during that part, and then we use a heavy masonry primer, which gives it the appearance of being painted for years. So it's almost like doing a classic car. It's the way you replicate it, you know, perfectly, because they had very coarse sand. And so, that's something, the smoother is preferred because it's easier, in a lot of ways, for guys to finish. That doing that undulated detail takes a lot of technique, and really, the guy has to be an artisan, who is the person who is applying it. It can't just be applied by a big crew. It has to be somebody who understands the subtleties of that style. And so, you know, that's what we are going to hope, you know, comes out. So.
Great, thank you. And then, the windows, wood or vinyl?
Really wood.
Wooden windows?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the applicants, representative? No? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I do have some cards, so we will open the public hearing. And the first card I have is from Matt McCarrwitch. Oh, that was you. Oh, very good. Next one is Maggie Hinch. No, you'd rather not? All right, very good. Last card then. Anderson Hinch.
I have something to say.
No, you're good?
I have something to say. I just thought that there are cases.
All right. Well, you got your chance, so very good. Anyone else, is there anyone else who'd like to say, yes, there are people who'd like to speak to this issue? No?
Say it.
Okay. Okay. Very good. So seeing no one else interested in speaking on this issue, I will close the public hearing and open up discussion amongst the commission. Zen?
I have more question for the staff. On the development standard, do we have any limit on the number of driveway cut we can have?
No.
Is there any policy to try to limit it? Because the reason I'm asking you is, the driveway in front of the door is about 13 feet wide. Because of the angle, the driveway cut is 25 feet on the right-hand side, and then 28 feet on the left-hand side. So it's a total of 53 feet driveway cut. That potentially, any driveway cut is a disruption to the sidewalk. But you're saying we don't have any limit on that?
No, there isn't. The project design has been reviewed by the engineering division, and the driveway cuts and the spacing do conform to that. And just in regards to if there was, you know, if a question was about parking on the street, there's no parking on the street allowed in this area, so that it wouldn't impact any parking, street parking there as well.
Okay. My next question is about the extra three feet easement behind the driveway cut, as a planning, as a condition of approval. This street seemed to be moderately steep at about 10%, maybe 12%. So the street is steep enough that cannot be used as an accessible route?
That's an engineering requirement to provide the up and around the driveway apron, so that if someone were on a wheelchair, they wouldn't be directed into the street. So that's a standard requirement that's on all of our sidewalk applications.
Okay. Well, it's about accessibility. Per ADA requirement is that. But this street doesn't lead to any public commercial and public use facility. It's a complete residential district, and it's on Hugheside. For accessible route, the maximum grade is 5%. Beyond that, you cannot have a continuous slope. You can go up to 1 or 12, and then you need to provide some landing. So I really don't see a point here to provide that extra easement for the accessibility issue, because no wheelchair will be there.
Well, if there was somebody on a wheelchair that was navigating the street, they would need that extra path to, so that they wouldn't be directed into the street. So I don't think that we can make the assumption that no one will ever travel on that street. And even though the street is steep, if somebody were still navigating on the sidewalk, that would be something that would be beneficial to them, as well as it is a standard condition of approval for all discretionary permits that result in a required sidewalk. So if the planning commission wants to provide more flexibility for the engineering division on that, I think, you know, you guys can discuss that. But that is a standard condition of approval for all projects.
Okay. Thanks. Well, this is not particular about this project. It's overall comments on the accessibility on Hugheside.
Hey, Michael?
Yeah, it's for John. I think we're all aware that there's no view protection in the City of San Clemente right now. But with the Cultural Heritage Permit that we're dealing with, can views from that particular home that be impacted? Is that a concern? Does that fit into the permitting process at all, or not?
To my knowledge, there hasn't been any project that's taken the view of a historic property into consideration for any potential negative physical or visual impacts to the historic structure. We're typically looking at massing, scale, architectural compatibility, those particular types of elements. This property is located actually behind the historic structure. So in terms of, you know, if there were an ocean view directed out of this location, this is located behind it. So the view is essentially from the historic structure, looking towards this particular property. So there hasn't been anything related to that element of it that would have any design changes associated with that.
Thanks.
Bart?
Yeah, just to Zen's comment on the sidewalk. No, it does not comply with ADA, but we have to also consider that families with strollers, walkers, and so forth use these, and it does help going around those curb cuts and not having it. So I don't think it'll be a concern there. I'm, we need to focus on the limited scope of what we're approving here. We're doing the Cultural Heritage Permit, and I'm pleased that they're doing a high-quality project. It is large, but it complies, and I think all the findings are justified. So I'm going to recommend approval. We have some more comments, though, and questions, I think. I saw some lights on down there. Michael?
Yes. Quick comment. Commissioner Smith, you're just confirming that there are no protected views from a property, okay? But in this case, I think it'd be reasonable to assume that we would be concerned with views to the historic site, correct? And I don't believe, why no, I haven't received any opposition to the project for that reason. But that is a factor to consider, views to a historic structure. I went out to the site, and I didn't have a problem navigating through the public right-of-way, and had clear view to the other homes on the street.
Yes, we received, John, we received a letter from one of the neighbors suggesting that in fact, there'd be more of a trees to help filter the mass of the building and the visual mass of the wall there. And I just wanted to know if that was ever taken into consideration.
I've discussed that with the applicant, and I think it'd be best if they addressed that.
Okay.
Yeah, Matt McCarrwitch. Yeah, to that, we definitely are going to elaborate on, we have a landscape plan, and we were, our main goal was to soften up the wall, the retaining wall that was required to put in the sidewalk. And so we wanted to soften that wall any way we could. There's a limit to the height. It's only 42 inches high. And then we have a space for more landscaping. And then the site wall, which is the property wall, or backyard wall, I should say. And then behind that, we plan on adding more hedge and growth, so it creates a more private atmosphere. It's not, it would not block any view. The only view is just from the site itself that would be affected if those were to grow up. They're not blocking anybody behind us, because the house is blocking that. So, but from the side of the historic home, definitely, there's going to be a lot more landscaping, and they're going to see much softer than they have right now, which is a big vinyl fence going all the way to the end of the property. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I want to make a, I think, just to echo Bart a little bit, we, these can be a little tricky, I think, because our job is to make sure that it is compatible with the historic structure. There's a lot of other valid issues, you know, the view issue, which we don't protect private views. So that's unfortunate. But, you know, working with the neighbors to deal with that, landscaping issues, good ideas, you know, that would be good to do. But I've, you know, as we talk about this, it's good to remember that we're looking at this really in relationship to the historic property next to it, and how does it affect that. You know, for that reason, I'm actually in support of the project as well. Wayne?
I ask that because we received a letter, and I think it's appropriate, when we receive letters like this, that we ask these questions in public. Very good. I see no other lights. So I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution PC 16006, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving Cultural Heritage Permit 15-256. Hinch Residence, a request to allow a major remodel in addition for a house that is adjacent to a historic resource located at 200 Avenue La Cuesta.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Michael Blackwell seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right, our next item, 8B, zoning amendment 15-426, short-term lodging units. Public hearing to consider a recommendation to the city council of a city-initiated zoning amendment to regulate and place restrictions on short-term lodging units in multiple zoning districts. And Mr. Otamian is going to kick us off.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. Adam Otamian, associate planner. Tonight, we have a public hearing, the first public hearing on the zoning amendment for the short-term lodging units. Ultimately, staff is requesting a continuation of this item for additional time to put together the ordinance. However, I would like to use the time tonight to go over some new, or I should say, continuing information that staff has been working on.
Thank you.
So I will begin by passing out two things. The first is a copy of the city council's ordinance, a hard copy. As we, as we mentioned, this was the ordinance that was passed on February 2nd, dealing with the revenues and taxes portion of the code, nuisance issues, things like that. And the second one is the revised matrix, matrices of zoning options related to short-term lodging units. We're going to be going through this, but I do want to explain what this, what these three pieces of paper are. The first one, as you know, we, at the last meeting, we handed out a menu of options and asked everybody to kind of weigh in. We received all of those papers back, and we appreciate your input. This is the boiled-down average of what everybody put together. And that's what's on the first page. The second page is a redlined version of the actual matrix, and there are a couple little changes that have been made, which I'll go through. But I just wanted you to see what was, what was changed, where the average kind of fell. And then the third page is a kind of a tally of where everybody's vote, or I should say, straw vote landed. One note, and more of a caveat, there were a lot of notes that were, little nuanced notes that were placed in a lot of different sections of this. If your note did not show up in the final version, it's not that we're ignoring it. It's just probably that you're the only one that came up with it. And at this point, we kind of want to get to the, just the basics, and then we'll work on kind of those little nuances. But if we go through this and you want to discuss this in more detail... But if we go through this and you want to discuss this in more detail, by all means, you know, feel free to bring those up, but at this point, I just wanted to get a really simple, simplified version of the standards that seem to be the, the average at this point. So without further ado, I want to go through these standards, putting off for a little bit the zoning. That's, that's still the, I would say, the most undecided section of this ordinance. However, as you notice on the PowerPoint, there's an asterisk after zoning, and I'm going to go through the standards. The ones with the asterisks have, are not what I would call a strong majority vote, so we don't have a clear consensus, but there is a way for us to develop an average based on what everybody chose. If it doesn't have an asterisk, that means at least four people are in favor of that standard. So starting with density, there was a definite weight towards capping the total STLU permits within any zone, not to exceed a certain percentage. The first change that I made was I adjusted this number to 1.5%. 1% seemed, in hindsight, it seemed a little bit too restrictive, and based on the, kind of the, the density and the clustering that we've been talking about, 1.5 makes a little bit more sense. And going on to clustering, especially when we use a 300-foot radius, when we use a 300-foot radius in most of the zones in the Southwest, we get a maximum density of about 1.5, so just to make those two consistent, I, that's why I changed the, the density to 1.5% of total housing units in any particular zone. The clustering, that was another majority opinion that 300 feet from other STLUs would be appropriate. There was a little bit of discussion about per-block maximums, but as we discussed in the last meeting, that seemed a little bit problematic, and at this point, I think it's, it's safe if we proceed with just a 300-foot spacing distance. Lastly, parking on this page, there was, the majority was for, was for additional requirements beyond what the STLU permit requires, which is just that the STLUs utilize onsite legal parking spaces. This parking is talking about going an additional step in actually identifying how much parking is necessary for each, for each STLU. What I did, though, on this one is I, I went with what the, the most commissioners thought, which was to actually set up a scheme similar to Bed and Breakfast, which requires a certain amount of parking based on the rooms and, and things like that. However, since the occupancy of the STLU is limited to two people per bedroom, having one car per bedroom seemed a little bit restrictive, so I changed it to be one parking space per every two rental bedrooms. That seems a little bit more realistic, especially if you have, you know, a family of four, it's unlikely the kids are going to drive their own car. However, maintaining the one guest space plus two spaces if owner lives onsite during the rental.
Adam, I'm not sure I understand this language here. If owner lives onsite, that means owner rent out the rooms? Just the rooms out, not, not the whole building?
Yes.
Or it could be a multifamily, where they live in one of the units, so they'd have to have two parking spaces accounted for themselves.
If it's a case of a single-family home, the owner lived there, and they rent out the rooms, didn't we say that that's considered home sharing, that's always permitted?
That's home sharing.
It is home sharing, however, I think that there, there should be parking restrictions if you're, if, if a, if a family is, is in a home, and they require two parking spaces just on their own, and then they're doing something where there's a, you know, an additional guest, that basically insinuates that they have a guest house, and guest houses and second residential dwelling units both require additional parking. It may not have to be this restrictive. I, I get that this is, this is a bit restrictive if somebody lives onsite and they're required to have more parking than somebody who's, who's not onsite watching, watching it, but ultimately, if you live there and you're renting it out, you could potentially be requiring more parking than, than a rental that's exclusive, you know, that's a whole house.
Okay, but does our, does our zoning define home sharing? Can you send me a link where, where that is? I looked for it, I couldn't find it.
Our zoning?
Yes.
We don't?
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
Then when we talk, when we talk about home sharing, how do we define that in code?
You know, that's a good question. Let me come back to that a little bit later. I can, I can put some more thought into the parking, but I-
And that was another issue that I think we're going to concentrate on at our next meeting, because one of the things that the council talked about at their meetings was that they actually didn't seem to have too much of an issue with home share, it was the non-owner occupied units. But we're going to get clarification from you at the next meeting. I really want to stay on task with the topics we have tonight and not kind of migrate to another topic that we really haven't prepared for tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking confused here on under-parking. So if there are three rental bedrooms, how many parking spaces would be required?
There would be, if, if it's, if there's no owner onsite, it would be three parking spaces. Because you'd have one for a guest, 1.5 for the number of bedrooms, and then that would round up to three.
Okay.
And though you could easily have a situation where only one car is, is actually onsite, just the fact that there's a potential that there could be three cars there at any given time, that's, that's the possibility we want to-
So if, if it were a four-bedroom, it would be required to have a total of three?
Four-bedroom would also require three, yes.
If the owner's not living on the site. All right, thank you.
And I'm, I'm just looking at this, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, I'm looking at the renter occupancy, because I think that relates to the parking. We're saying two per bedroom plus two additional, and I'm kind of relating this to, when I look on, online sometimes, I'll see something like, you know, a two-bedroom place, you know, sleeps nine, you know? That's kind of what's advertised. And I think you're right, there's going to be times when there's a family in there, there's, you know, two parents, two kids, and two, two rooms, but there's also times when there's, you know, you know, two parties there plus someone on the couch and that sort of thing, and, and I'm just wondering if we're, you know, do you think we're buying ourselves any parking issues by not accommodating kind of for the maximum there? If we have a, if we have a-
Rephrase that?
If we have a two-bedroom place for instance, the occupancy, it's two people per bedroom plus two additional, so that's, we're saying six people can stay there without, and that's not even, not, not owner occupied. But in that case, we're saying there's a total of two parking spaces they need, and that, that's also, that includes the spaces they would use if they had more visitors coming by.
Yes.
So that seems to be, at that point, under-park.
Potentially. You know, I think, you know, when we deal with parking standards, we're trying to get a viable average. You know, there's always going to be situations where potentially a slight bit of additional parking could, could feasibly be needed, but I think that, you know, on a, on a two-bedroom, when there, when there's six people total, two parking spaces seems like it, it would suffice for what they're, what the regulations require. You could get more people into the place.
Also, also keep in mind that you have an existing ordinance that requires that you park onsite. So there's an additional, you know, the city council's adopted TOT ordinance for this STLU is you cannot park off-site, so if there's a problem situation where there's a, you know, they meet this parking requirement, whatever the planning commission settles on, there's that additional safeguard that says, hey, if you're a problem, you're, you're causing impacts on the neighborhood, you know, you are not meeting best management practices, then you get evaluated in the following year, and they could lose your permit.
Okay. I, I am a little worried, though, about, that's hard to enforce. We can enforce the fact that there's X number of legal parking spaces at some place, we can take pictures or whatever, but we can't necessarily enforce that says you have to park onsite, but if they have five cars, they're not going to park onsite, so.
A surface parking count?
On the street?
No, on the site.
On the site, like the driveway? Those are, if they're in front of the garage, then those count as legal onsite parking spaces. However, based on the way the code is written, you, you wouldn't be able to count two in the garage and two in front, all as legal parking spaces.
Driveway parking?
You can legally park on a driveway, so what the, what the TOT section of the code says is that you have to park in legal spaces. Well, those are legal spaces. You can't park on the grass, you can't park, you really can't park even on paved spaces that are not in front of a garage or another legal parking space. So you can park there, but that doesn't actually count towards how much required parking you have.
Okay, so, so if we have a three-bedroom lodging unit, and we just said we, they need three parking spaces, they can be covered on a surface parking, but the driveway parkings are not counted?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
I'm not sure that we would, we would provide, we would allow required parking on the driveway when we don't allow that to be counted on single-family residences.
Right. So the zoning code requires that the parking be provided, for it to be legal, to be behind the setback requirement, the front yard setback, and a single-family neighborhood's 20 feet, so that's why you have to use your, your garage typically to count for your two parking spaces in a single-family neighborhood. So it's, you know, there's an alternative that you could create through this ordinance to allow the driveway to be used, you know, so long as it's not going across, you know, so long as it's illegal, from an enforcement standpoint, it can't go over a sidewalk. You have that flexibility to consider that, but right now, if it's a legal parking space the way I think you say it's defined in the, the TOT ordinance, it has to conform to all the requirements of a legal parking space in the zoning code.
Okay. But currently, all the single-family home, regardless of how they, how big they are, they only require two parking spaces, and they need to be covered. That's a little bit different from that.
Well, for a single-family, that's the requirement.
Right.
Multifamily has different parking requirements.
Multifamily, when you have lots of bedroom, you need more parking spaces, but a single-family, no matter how big you are, you only need two. What is the rationale there?
Historically, that's been done-
I don't know the rationale of when the zoning code first, you know, typically, that's figure, I assume, is the typical, you know, average family has two cars, and that's why the requirement's that way. But single families typically don't have the same parking impacts in their neighborhoods as, you know, the multifamily zones.
Bart, I think you were next.
Are we making this parking thing too complicated? I don't know why the parking just doesn't say that each unit parks itself.
Can I mention something?
Sure.
What I'd like to do is have Adam get through his presentation and then go back and talk about all these points.
Okay, so just questions here, and then we come back?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, I would like to talk about these as we go through each and every one of them, quite frankly, because I, I have a number of questions on this, and I'm still confused about this parking thing here. And I think it's important, I mean, you go through all the whole thing, and then you come back, but, and then you lose continuity with regard to each topic, and I think it's important, if we're, we're talking about parking, that we discuss parking, and we discuss trash or whatever as we go through there. For example, on the parking here, I think it's important that if you're, if you're going to have two bedrooms, it should have equals, you should have equal, I mean, how many parking spaces are required? Three, how many parking spaces are required? Four, because if I'm reading this, it's one parking space per two rental bedrooms. So I asked the question, I said, what if you had three rental bedrooms? Well, you said that you needed three, but if you're looking at this, and I'm looking at this, maybe I'm looking at incorrectly, it should be 1.5. So that's why I'm confused about this particular thing right here. So I think it's important that you have, if you're going to have two rental bedrooms, it requires X amount, if you have three bedrooms, it requires X amount. I think that's much clearer than, than what is here right now.
That's not a problem at all. I, I think the bigger, the bigger thing that we want to get to here is that we have a lot of non-conforming issues with parking. We also have a lot of, I should say, all of these uses are, are basically taking over properties that were meant for residential uses. And so if you have a house that's got six bedrooms, you know, this is not a single-family use, this is a lodging use, and so what we, we don't want to have is an enforcement issue, which is sort of what we have in the TOT section, which is just that, you know, you're going to tell it how many parking spaces, legal parking spaces you have, and then you're going to promise that your renters are going to use it. Whereas this is, you know, if we continue this to the end of the line, we're talking about an administrative permit where staff can review and ensure that the STLU actually has parking appropriate for what they're looking for.
That's all nice and fine, but I think it's important that it's clear what we, what we're doing here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's not an issue, I, you know, this, these kinds of standards are based on other ones that we have in the code, and staff is very familiar with, with applying parking requirements similar to this, where we have rounded numbers that, that get rounded to the next one. However, I'm more than happy to take that language that you see here and simply create a chart that says, you've got this many bedrooms, you need this many units, and that's fine. I can definitely do that. That's not a problem at all.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm going to follow up with what Wayne's talking about. I don't know what's wrong with saying each bedroom is a parking space, because if you have, if you have two bedrooms, then you have two parking spaces, if you're three, you have three, and according to what Jim's saying, those spaces have to be within a garage and not in front of a garage?
They don't have to be, they don't all have to be in a garage. A single-family residence requires two covered parking spaces, so that could be in a garage, it could be in a carport. However, they're allowed to provide a, a lot more parking, that parking just simply can't be in setback areas. So there are homes that legally have 10 parking spaces.
So if you had a two-car garage, and then you have quite a bit of driveway, so that you could put two more cars in front of that garage and be past the setback, you'd have four parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I can follow that. So anyway, I'm, I guess I'm an advocate for parking space per bedroom. I also don't understand the thing that you said about, oh, you could have six people living in there, and you'd have to have two parking spaces, and I can interpret that as, if you have six people, you could have three couples, and each couple would have a car, that'd be three cars. So I, I don't necessarily buy that that's two parking spaces.
You could also have six individuals that are all surfing together, and they're driving six cars. I mean, there's, you know, this is looking at what are typical uses for lodging situations, and what I base this on was something closer to, that I, I thought was a little bit more compatible with how we look at bed and breakfasts, which bed and breakfasts, they do look at per bedroom. However, there's no limit to how many people can be in each bedroom, and there's also more of a, of an expectation that each bedroom is going to be a separate rental in a bed and breakfast. These are typically more single rentals, groups of people that know each other, and because of that, a limit of two per bedroom seems slightly restrictive to a family of, to what I would say is a typical vacation rental family that is showing up in one or two cars.
So, so for, so for a B&amp;B, we're saying it's one per bedroom, but for an STLU, we would say it's less than that?
Yes.
See, I, I'm kind of with Michael on that.
Well, it's both, because you could have 10 people in one bed and breakfast room. There's no- There's no limitation on the number of people you can have in a bed and breakfast room.
Regarding the parking requirement, I think one parking per bedroom is a little too restrictive. Typically, hotel use, depending on the type of hotel, they vary, but 0.5 is the norm. Sometime it'll go up a little bit, 0.6, 0.7, parking space per room. One parking space per room is very restrictive.
Well, in higher-density areas, we've got a parking problem out there.
That's true.
And we've got to make accommodations for that in higher-density areas.
Well, we're talking about the average number for hotel.
Well, we're not talking about a hotel. Hotel is six units or more. We're talking about STLUs.
Right. The number I quoted is for hotel parking.
Well, that's not what we're talking about here.
I'm just using it as a reference to say that if we ask for one parking space per bedroom, that would be too restrictive. It's too high.
Well, let me ask, we're kind of going, you know, kind of back and forth in this argument. Is there, or this discussion, excuse me, how do people feel about, and maybe we should take a straw poll?
We shouldn't be taking any votes with a member absent at this point. I don't think that we should be doing that. We should be discussing these things, but straw votes are another type of votes I don't think are appropriate when we have a member who's absent at this point.
It's a straw vote, so it's not binding, and we also have a quorum, so, you know, taking a vote when you have a quorum is an appropriate action.
On issues like this, I think we need full member, full bodies.
I'm only looking to give, to give staff some direction as to the majority of the planning commission. That's all.
Well, Adam, you just said, for each item on the screen, there are at least four agree on with that, right?
Yes. You know, this was just something that I changed, because looking at it again, it just struck me as slightly more restrictive than where, than I think is beneficial. But four people said they were fine with one parking space per bedroom. So I have no problem using that, and if that's an issue when the ordinance is presented, then we can discuss it then.
Now, you listed one parking space per two rental bedroom.
Not on the handout. The handout that you got was, it said one space per bedroom.
Okay.
Bart?
Yeah, I feel like we're just guessing at this number of parking, and my question is, why don't we just use the standards for apartments? One bedroom gets one plus a guest, two-bedroom gets, I think, 1.5 plus a guest. It's tried and true, it's used in apartment projects all the time, and there's something to base it on, rather than just kind of guessing.
Is that adequate in our high-density areas? Because right now, parking is a problem in high-density areas.
I don't know how they're currently parked, but that's a standard that's used nationally for apartments.
Well, I think it's important not to use things nationally when we're talking about San Clemente, and in certain areas, we have really a problem with parking.
And I think it's probably substandard to that standard. That's why I think the standard of, for an apartment, a one-bedroom getting one plus a guest is more than enough. A two-bedroom gets, I think it's 1.5, a three-bedroom goes to two. If you can pull that up, Jim, that'd be great. And I mean, it's something tried and true, it's on the books.
One and a half requires two parking spaces?
No, it requires, to two.
Well, if you have...
It's across the project.
I think there's going to be an exception to everything here, but going on that line, studios and one-bedrooms require 1.5 spaces. If you've got a couple of those, and each one of them is allowed to have four people in it, you could quickly get to a situation, I think, where, you know, three of them would require five parking spaces, and you potentially have six couples. You know, I mean, there's going to be some loophole at some point in time. You know, I think sticking with how other lodging units are parked, other lodging uses is probably the best scenario. You know, in this case, we, you know, we have residents that have discussed the parking issues that they're faced with, and so we kind of know what the extreme is. You know, we just want to, you know, put in place a situation where staff can review a property before it's granted the ability to rent as a short-term lodging unit to ensure that they have, you know, what we would consider the minimum necessary parking for the use. What that is, we can, you know, we can kind of debate, but...
Do you want to divulge a sentence?
Yeah, because I'm thinking, it may be when we change, do this, some apartment project may want to go to vacation rental.
There's two standards for what we would consider the multi-family zone. Method one is the number of bedrooms. One bedroom is 1.5 spaces, two bedrooms is two spaces, three bedrooms is 2.5 spaces, over three bedrooms is three spaces. Method two is by square footage, and it's whatever's the greatest. So if it's over 900 square feet, it needs 1.5, over 1,800 square feet, it needs two, over 2,700 square feet, it needs 2.5. Anyway, that's based on kind of a single-owner dwelling unit or a single-renter dwelling unit.
I think, as Wayne commented, that these are, we have areas of town where the parking is getting worse and worse without actual more building density, probably as a result of this. I'm not sure using the apartment standard is going to work, because these aren't treated as apartments, they're treated as a different kind of use, although it's a good, it might be a good, you know, first step to look at. My question for you guys right now is, are we giving you the information you need in order to take the next step? That's kind of what I'm, I'm worried that we're not giving you clarity.
No, I think that this discussion on parking is really beneficial.
Okay, good.
Especially as, you know, we're talking about existing parking issues, and the fact that there hasn't been a lot of development. You know, we are talking about essentially a new use coming in, and this is an opportunity to incentivize compliance with standards, with parking standards. You know, if this was just families continually turning over, we'd never really have an opportunity to require more parking. But as this is being a new use, we have an opportunity to say, you know, if you want to use this for, you know, something other than residential, long-term rentals, then you get to, you know, provide some parking. And if it requires you to build another parking space, then I think it's in the city's best interest.
And, Michael, yes?
Just taking another approach to our perspective here. So when this goes through, we're going to be, we're going to have a process, we're going to have an STLU permit, whatever we end up calling it. Along with that, hopefully, there'll be a side inspection by staff. If there was a side inspection, couldn't we, instead of occupancy out, look at it as parking in? So what that property could accommodate? So it's going to vary, we have some very unique properties all throughout town, so we may not be able to meet that. So we look at the, as it's written now, so we look at the parking capacity, and then determine the maximum occupancy from that point out via inspection. So the planner would access the property, you know, identify the potential sleeping arrangements, and make, and if there's an exception needed, there would be a process built into this, call it a variance or whatever it is, and it's reviewed accordingly.
Well, I think what you have done here is, you can go back to your, if one parking space per bedroom is essentially one parking space for two people, another way of looking at it, that's the standard, it sounds like, that four out of the seven commissioners are looking at. So either way, if you want to do it by the bedroom or the number of occupants, either one works.
I don't know how you get 0.5, you know? To me, I don't know how you get that.
You round up.
Well, you have to round up then.
Did you have something else, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's it.
Hey, Michael?
Thank you, Jim. You know, from what I can gather about this whole process is that we're better off looking at the, more of a restrictive standard than a least restrictive standard. From what we've been hearing from our constituents who come in here and talk about it, this parking thing is a nightmare. And so you could end up saying, okay, you've got one parking space here, so that's what you get, and you could get 10 dorm guys that come in there with one parking, and then you're still going to have a problem. Or what's worse, and I can't figure out how this is possibly going to be able to be monitored or controlled or what have you, is that, okay, so you check a box, you get one parking space, right, and two guys show up, and they park there. Meanwhile, the buddies park on the street, and they all show up in the room. How are you going to enforce that? You're not going to be able to enforce it. This parking thing is going to be a nightmare. Bottom line, unenforceable, and a nightmare. So you better make it restrictive, and Wayne's right, you've got these high-density areas, you're going to get somebody in there that's got two bedrooms, okay, you've got two parking spots, whatever, you could have 10 people in there, eight of them parking with a car on the street. So that's where the dam breaks, and that's where the slope is slippery, and that's really what makes this problem so darn difficult, because it's uncontrollable. And the question is, is it how many people, how many cars, what are you going to do? But in enforcing this, you're never going to be able to enforce the parking, because you're not going to know who's on the street.
Could I just, clearly, the best time to check the parking would be through the permit procedure and, you know, getting a site plan that shows how many parking spaces are on site. So the standard of one parking space per bedroom is, you know, really easy for us to enforce. And I think you're right, there's no telling what the actual occupants are going to do, they can bring 10 cars or one car, but at least that's a standard that we can go by. And I think we have pretty clear direction on this topic. If it's okay, I'd like to kind of move it on so that we can get on to some of the other items.
Let me just, Zen had his light on, so final comment on this.
We haven't talked about zones. Are we going to allow them in commercial zone? If we all agree that we should allow that, allow them in mixed-use zone. So if someone comes to us and say, and they want to build something, not a residential property, with a STLU permit, they just want to build something, it's called a STLU, 100% of the time, can they convert it back to residential?
We're going to talk about zones when, kind of after we handle all these issues, because zones are probably going to be the, one of the toughest things we have to deal with. So, but yeah, we're going to go through these first, and then we're going to do zones.
Thank you, Chair Jim Ruhl. Just, commercial's been kept out of the conversation because it's allowed with lodging units, and we're not proposing to change the lodging standards for the commercial zones. But the STU is a residential, is in a residential use, which isn't allowed in the commercial zone, so we don't see that.
What's the parking for lodging?
One parking space per unit for a hotel, and then two for the manager's unit.
Next item, trash?
Okay. Trash is, trash is another one that we got some consensus on. It was the requirement that STLUs have double the trash and recycling containers required of residential properties, but also that the recycling, the waste bins be more screened than they are required to be in residential. So right now, there's a requirement that they're partially screened, and just outside of the setback, we would require full screening outside of the setback as well, but just the provision that there'd be additional trash receptacles available. Any discussion on that one? All right. The next two, that was, this was probably the most consensus that we got, no owner-occupancy requirement, and then no additional renter occupancy requirement, which is, you know, as we discussed previously, is, leads to potential enforceability issues. The annual rental limitations, we had a majority there that felt that 90 days, a limitation of 90 days of rental per year would be most appropriate. Chair Brown actually mentioned 91 days, and that was that if, based on the minimum rental length, if the minimum rental length happens to be seven nights, that 91 days gives somebody 13 full weeks of rental versus nine, you know, 90 days, which is just one short, and I, it's, I left it at 90 days because that seemed to be the consensus, and it's a nice round number with months.
Okay, before you go on, a couple things. Bart?
Yeah, on that 90 days, I just don't get it. If we say that the impacts from the use of this structure is going to bother the people, and we've got to give them relief from it, then it's not compatible. End deal. If you can only rent it for 90 days because it's got too much impact on the neighborhood, I don't, you can't mitigate it. So that's my thought on that one. It's either the full year or not at all.
Michael?
Well, in theory, Bart, I agree with you, and that's why I don't think we should do this in residential districts, period. But if we're going to go that way, and we're going to allow it, it's better to have some maximum than nothing. So I think some provision here makes some sense if we're going to go that way. I'm not sure that we're all not going to go that way because of the logic of what you said, Bart, I agree with that. But assuming that we go with 90 days, then that begs the question, what happens to the rest of the time in that unit? Is the owner going to be there? What is going to be vacant? What, you know, where does that go? And I think if you're thinking like I'm thinking, that you're thinking, well, then the owner's going to be there the rest of the time. If it's not the owner, then who can it possibly be? It'll be vacant. So this is a really very difficult kind of thing to figure out, I think, so, for whatever it's worth.
Wayne?
The rest of the time, for the nine months, they could rent it out long-term. And there's a lot of, when you consider that, in fact, the power plant is going to be having thousands of people come in for work, they're going to be looking for places that are going to be more long-term, where it's going to be three months, four months, six months, or nine months. And so I think if you have 90 days, I think, this was discussed, I think, at length at the city council meeting, and that's what they came up with. I think the consensus, I don't think they actually, and put that in the TOT, but I think that, in fact, that was a number that they talked about a lot. But the owner doesn't have to live there, but they could certainly rent it out more long-term. And that happens, that happens on my street, for example. They can rent it out more long-term, and that's fine. Marines come to town, they're for six months or for nine months or whatever, and they're deployed again. This is a perfect opportunity for renting out short-term and long-term at that time. And so that's the reason, I think, behind 90 days, as far as what I have seen in vacation rentals in my area.
I just think with that thinking, which I understand, it should be connected with this night cave. It just can't be 90 days.
Link it with owner occupancy?
No, we're going to have to link it with, you know, the, you rent it out monthly basis and that.
Well, that's a by-right use of a...
That's a by-right use.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what we do now. Yeah, you know, Bart, I think, I hadn't thought about it that way, but it's, I think you have a good point, but I think I'll, I won't say much more on this, because I, to me, this is also a zoning issue, kind of where... me, this is also a zoning issue, kind of where, you know, where we decide to do this, you know, kind of, kind of impacts that, so. Any other questions or comments on any of these issues that we're showing? Frank, Milan?
All right. Minimum night rental length, I should say. There wasn't a clear consensus or a majority on this, however, three commissioners were leaning towards a minimum rental of seven nights, with one between three and seven, and one at three. And my thought here was to take it kind of more of an average approach and say, you know, maybe a minimum rental length of five nights would suffice. It would deal with the, kind of, reducing the amount of short-term users that are more likely to create disturbances without, without requiring, you know, a full seven-night rental that may be not feasible for a lot of people that are just on vacation. I'm just, I'm putting that out there.
The possibility is to, instead of limit the minimum rental length and the total number of days, you limit the number of rentals, let's say 15 every year, or 13, whatever the number is. By the way, you limit the total number of turnovers, and the impact to the neighborhoods.
Well, if a rental, if a short-term rental is 29 days or less, then anything less than, you know, anything more than 12 rentals potentially could be a full-time, short-term rental.
Right. If we, if we agree that we give them 90 days, and let's say, average, they're about five days, that's about 18, 18 rentals. And instead of saying 90 days and a minimum five, we just say, you can rent out 18 times a year, that's all, regardless of how...
That, that's definitely one way to look at it. I think that the purpose of a minimum rental period that's multiple days is to reduce the amount of renters that are looking for a quick, fun weekend, and try to encourage more renters that are a bit more longer-term vacationers. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to keep a party going five nights.
I realize.
I'll say it's harder. At least it's more expensive.
I guess it's a one night or two nights, that can be commended by hotels. Okay, I buy that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think that, I think Adam's going to, you know, a good point, that if you just did 18 times, you could end up with people doing this on a weekend basis, so I think that would be pretty chaotic with a situation that's already that way. I would tend to go more conservative again, and say, maybe it should be seven nights.
Wayne?
From the observations I've had on my street, and probably more liberal, a lot of people with regard to vacation rentals and identity, but if you come in for three nights, I've got to tell you, there's a lot more partying going on. And then they leave, another, another group comes for another three nights, and it's just an incredible amount of turnover, to say the least. And it's, it's, it's very chaotic to say, it's very chaotic. I think, I think what you've done here for five nights is reasonable. I think seven probably is too long. I think a lot on the street that I live on, I think they come for five nights, you know, I think, I think that's reasonable.
Anything else on minimum rental length? Okay, let's go to the next one.
I've got a comment on that. If my neighbor, old, older woman, she wants to rent out a room to Airbnb person, that would be most likely one night, two nights stay.
We're not talking about that, we're not...
But it will fall into this STLU category.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. That's, we're not talking about home sharing.
By your definition, those are. We have, because your definition says a structure, a portion of a structure, if someone wants to rent out a room, and they stay in the room, the owners live in the room, they want to...
Yes, so we have, as we were saying, we're going to discuss this a little bit later, but it might just serve us to kind of cover this now. The city council, when they were reviewing the ordinance, we, at the time that we had owner occupancy requirements in it, there was concern about how that would affect home sharing, home exchanges, and those kinds of things. We made definitions for those, and we put that in that ordinance. And the city council, you know, by all intents, you know, as we could gather, was fine with home sharing not being beholden to a 90-day maximum, or even, you know, the other requirements that they were looking at. But that stuff got taken out, because everything that required us to differentiate between home sharing and exclusive vacation rentals was removed, like the 90-day maximum, or the 275-day owner occupancy thing. So all of that got taken out, but, you know, staff is pretty, we feel rather confident that the city council still wants to treat home sharing, and even home exchanges, slightly differently than a, than an exclusive commercial enterprise of a, of a vacation rental or short-term, you know, full-time, short-term lodging unit. So, you know, when we discuss home sharing later, what we're probably going to end up doing is just defining it, and noting that it's not, that the, you know, minimum rental lengths and the maximum number of days you can rent a year don't apply to, to home sharing situations.
But since they are related issues, why don't we define them clearly at this moment? What is considered STLU, and what is considered home sharing?
Again, we are. We're not prepared to do it tonight, and we didn't want to get the commission off on a subject that we weren't really fully prepared for. So we'll bring it up at the next meeting. We understand it will have to be defined differently than a regular occupied, unoccupied, owner-occupied vacation rental. So it'll be different, it'll be defined differently, and then when we discuss the zoning, we can talk about, you know, its application as well. But I'd like to be more, more prepared, and give you more information in order to address the issue.
So, so just to be clear, we're, we're treating owner-occupied right now as potentially a separate animal, that we'll get into a little later on, okay? Okay, next one, quiet hours?
All right, quiet hours. There was not a total consensus on this, however, there was a, more of a majority to include specific quiet hours. Since, you know, since we're dealing with people on three sides of a potential way to come down on this, I just, I chose what was, what would be the average, which is a little, which is more restrictive than the quiet hours that the city has in place now, by about an hour on either side. So the city's standard is 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM weekdays. This is just an hour, an additional hour on either side of that.
Wayne?
General question. We're making rules and regulations different here for STLU's as it would be for other, you know, for other types of residences, such as parking, or trash, or quiet hours. Is this going to be, and probably this is a question for our deputy city attorney there, is this, is this going to be copacetic, because we have different regulations for STLU's than we do for the normal residential type of operation?
Mr. Vice Chair and commissioners, I think the question is, can, can we do this legally? Have different standards for, for different uses in the same residential zone? And the answer is yes. If, if findings can be made, that the uses truly are qualitatively different, then legally you can do, there's a question of enforcement, but that's not a question really, I think, for us tonight, or for the legal council, but yeah, this can be done.
Thank you.
Okay. Bart?
Yeah, I've got a problem on the quiet hours, because it's kind of a two-way street. We have the phantom, single-family residents that's rented out, short-term family, they've got to be quieter than the people next door. Doesn't make sense, I don't know how you enforce it. You've got a rental unit, some guy comes in, "I want to rent it for six months." The enforcement guy is driving around, he thinks it's a vacation rental, and it's different standards, so it's changing depending on the term of the occupancy. And I just think it needs to be the same for the zone, and match it, and be done with it.
I agree, it's, I agree.
You know, I get the point. I mean, it's a, it's a real good point, and enforcement is, is an issue, but the issue is, is the, is the reality of these people who are dealing with, you know, vacationers, who are a lot more prone to party, a lot more often, versus a residence where, you know, on occasion, someone's going to have a party, and, you know, if it's on occasion, no one, no one's really going to mind too much, versus, you know, very often. So if not quiet hours, how do we manage that, that circumstance, where, you know, guys are on vacation, and there's going to be a pretty steady stream of, in some of these places, a pretty stream, pretty steady stream of partying? How do we, how do we solve that problem? Michael?
I'm just curious, Adam, what, what's the normal quiet hours in this committee?
It's 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Every day?
Yeah, I believe that's seven days a week. There's different, then you've got different hours for other activities like construction.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah.
You know, we've got an enforcement nightmare going on here, anyway, I don't know why we'd want to...
Well, it is, you know, I, it's very unlikely that we're going to have city staff driving around, listening for, you know, vacation renters. More likely, this is just something that people that are next to these uses are going to have, you know, kind of an additional tool to call in a complaint. I mean, if they have to wait till 10:00 PM to call in a complaint, that potentially is starting to ruin their morning, whereas if they can start making a complaint at 9:00, at least they may still get, you know, a full night's sleep by the time something is done about it. And I, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, we don't want, you know, the city or neighbors to be, you know, the babysitters, but, you know, you know, there's not a whole lot of options we have to, especially when it comes to enforcing quiet solitude, other than something like this. This has been done in a lot of cities. We, we haven't heard a lot of discussion about how enforcing quiet hours is difficult. There are definitely enforcement issues with other standards, but, you know, I, we haven't really heard a lot about the difficulty of enforcing this. Something to think about, I, you know, we've got some time. I'll, I'll leave it as it, as you see it here, and we can, that's something that can be quickly adjusted.
You know, what I think's really important about it is that the reality of residential folks living in those, they are going to be flipped, they're going to ask, "Are you all?" And you set these times, and these people who rent these places, they go, "Maybe it past 9:00 AM or 10:00 PM, people are going to call," because we're linking this to a certain number of strikes, and you're outright, so I can tell you that this will be enforced by the neighbors.
And also, we'll, we'll give our code enforcement officers perspective on this for you.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, if there's nothing else on that one, we're on to amortization.
All right. So amortization. There was quite a bit of discussion about this previously, when, when we got everything back. I would say that this was the most agreed-upon aspect of this proposed ordinance. However, the three years that I had listed was actually seen as a bit too liberal. Most people were somewhere between 18 and 24 months, so I put down two years, just as kind of what, what it seemed like most people were, were comfortable with.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne?
It's okay. Okay, so here I go. I don't know why we would amortize high-density areas. We've had vacation rentals in high-density areas for a long time, and we're going to deal with that with regard to density, and clustering, and that type of thing. But if we, if we say, for example, that they're not going to be allowed in single-family residential areas, and I know we have a number of people going to speak about that this evening, so if we say that, I would, I would say amortization is, is important for the single-family residential areas. And I put on my note, 18 months, because that would give them two summers. And then they can decide to do, number one, they can rent it long-term, they can move in, or they can sell, whatever they want to do. So amortization throughout the city, I don't think is, is something that we would even consider, because in, in my area, for example, that means after two years, there would be no more vacation rentals. And we've had vacation rentals ever since I've been around. But let me give you a story here about amortization. A number of years ago, I bought a commercial building in the Bay Area, and I bought it based upon depreciation methods and write-offs. Guess what happened the next year? The Internal Revenue Service came around and said, "Oh, guess what, your depreciation method is now out, and here's a new depreciation method, and by the way, the write-offs that you were going to be doing, because I was going to be doing a lot of improvements, the write-offs are now limited." Did I go to the IRS and say, "I want to be amortized or grandfathered"? What do you think they would have said? So I think we have to be very careful when we come here to amortization or grandfathering, and I'm glad we're talking about amortization instead of the word grandfathering, because I want to, if, if in fact it's going to be restricted to single-family neighborhoods, I think we should be fair, but not, not so liberal that they're going to continue forever and ever, because what happens if, if you have three or five years, which the attorneys have suggested to city council, after three or five years, they're going to come in and say, "Look, I've operated this property, a single-family residence for three years or five years, and I've, I've been a good operator, and I want to continue for three or five more years." So we start the whole cycle over and over again. And so I think we have to be very careful when we talk about amortization. Where are we going to do amortization, and for how long? And so that's my little spiel on amortization. But I didn't dare go to the Internal Revenue Service and say, "Hey, I want to be grandfathered under the old rules." That wasn't going to happen, so.
Okay, any other comments on the amortization? Okay, so we're on to process?
All right. Okay, so the majority is looking at supporting an administrative STLU zoning permit. This would be processed by staff, not run with the land, automatically expire upon sale or transfer of the property. There was some discussion about potentially having different levels of review based on, on the zones. I can tell you, staff is probably most supportive of maintaining this as an administrative But, you know, this, this would be tied to the STLU TOT permit, however, they would be fundamentally looking at two different things. This one would be looking at the appropriateness of the particular location to serve as an STLU. The other permit looks at, you know, granting the privilege of paying TOT tax, essentially.
Wayne?
How do we know when a property sells?
Right now, we don't.
Well, on my little chart, I put there that it should be, a STLU permit should be a recordable document, so that when the property sells, we know that it sells, because otherwise we have no knowledge that it has sold. So I think we need to add that to this, that it's going to be a recordable document.
That's something we can do, I, you know, with it having, with the STLU permit being required, requiring an annual renewal, at that time, you know, the owner's information is, is required.
But that's per, that's per that specific owner at that time. It does, that's... It does...STLU doesn't transfer to a new owner.
Yes, but the STLU permit is...for the TOT section requires...that's tied to a piece of property as well. So when they need to renew that, they'll have to, you know, they'll have to say, you know, either the name of the owner's going to change, because it has, or it remains the same, and there's really no concern. But if it does change, and we know that they also need an STLU zoning permit, then we would know at that point that the property's been sold.
But if...but the STLU permit is by the name of the property owner, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. So if it's by the name of the property owner, and it sells, then we need to know that it's got...there's a new owner. And the only way to do that is with a recordable document. It does...the STLU is not per the address, it is per the owner.
No, it's both. I mean, it's got both of their information, but it's tied to the property at hand.
Well, then somehow it should be...that needs to be reviewed, because we could have a new owner that came in there, and we, you know, and it could be six months or eight months of a new owner.
Yeah, that's true.
We can look at it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like a pretty objective enforcement mechanism, so...Michael?
Yes, just a question, taking outside the box here, on any sort of request for deviation from the standard, what our process might be in that case? Should an applicant want maybe a day or two more, or whatever it is, it's a deviation, how would that be treated?
Well, any deviation, most likely, is going to require a...some kind of discretionary permit, which we don't really want to get into.
The way that we're doing it right now, deviation isn't permitted. So the only thing that you can deviate would be a zoning amendment.
Well, doesn't an applicant have a right, though, to seek relief? Now?
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, an applicant does have that right. That's typically done through a variance. I would frankly be shocked if a variance would ever be available from the STLU standards, especially because variances are not permitted when it comes to use standards. So variances have to do with land, shape, topography, setbacks, et cetera, not with use standards. So I concur with Mr. Petches.
Thank you.
Oh, Michael?
Yeah, a question just occurred to me. With the tax payments that these owners need to make to the city, how are they based? Are they based on each occupant, or the time of a unit being rented? What if you have a unit with 20 people in it, or a unit with three people in it? Is the tax different? I'm just curious how that works.
It's 10% of the...it's 10% of the cost of the rental.
So it has nothing to do with how many people are...
If anyone else has anything about the process, I have a couple suggestions here, if I may.
Sure, could you hit your...
Oh, thanks. Insurance. There are...the major insurance companies, as I understand it, do not cover vacation rentals. And I found that out because I called my insurance company, and he gave me a big lesson in that. And so the major ones, as I understand, do not cover vacation rentals. And there are smaller ones that do, okay? And so I called one of the fellows who specializes in vacation rentals. And in fact, there's been instances where there's been something happening at the property, and then, in fact, the owner of the building tries to contact their insurance company to recover from that. It's a trip or fall or whatever. The insurance company finds out that it's a vacation rental, and they don't cover them. And so what happens then? I don't know. If, in fact, is the city then...I mean, can someone then turn around and sue the city? Because we've not asked for a specialized type of vacation rental insurance, or what?
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, with the requirement of an STLU administrative permit, as with any permit that is granted by the city, there will be conditions attached to that, including defense indemnity conditions, that would shield the city from liability. Now, does that shield us from...
A lawsuit?
A lawsuit? No, it doesn't. And that's expensive. So that is a consideration, it looks like. But we would certainly be shielded from liability pursuant to an STLU permit that's granted.
And the other issue I had was, we really haven't talked about in more high-density areas where there are multiple units, such as one to four units, or one to five units. Are we going to permit, for example, the...obviously, the owner has to live in one of those units, in multifamily dwellings. But are we going to say that all the rest of those units are then going to be vacation rentals and taken off the rental market? I mean, we have a workforce housing out there that we're trying to get as far as apartments for rent. So we really haven't discussed that. And we're obviously not going to discuss that this evening, but I think it's important for our consideration.
And we can. I just wanted to point out that the TOT ordinance did cover it. They defined it as, what was the...five? Did the maximum is five or less units per building?
Right. It covered it through that. But the other question I had was, are we going to allow all four or five of those units to be vacation rentals?
That won't be possible, because if the minimum separation of 300 feet stands...
Well...
Then the whole building has a one.
Exactly. But there are some owners of multi-units here in San Clemente who are now operating, who are very good operators, who, in fact, have three or four units, and they live in one, and they rent out the other ones. And so I think it's important for us to know about that, and to discuss that. Because once we do the clustering and the density, that would limit that. However, should there be some sort of an allowance for that, where they go to the zoning administrator and get some type of approval for that? Because otherwise, you know, we're going to be caught on one side where they can't do that, and the other side where we're going to have three or four units that have the potential for being vacation rental units.
I wonder if we want to discuss that when we talk about the owner-occupied units? Does that seem reasonable?
We can bring that back.
Yeah.
Because there's a different ways you can look at it. You could, you know, as Commissioner Wu mentioned, it would be impossible because of the separation requirements. But you could look at it as one building as one site, and that would be just one location, not five locations, or whatever numbers in that maximum of five right now, according to the code. You could restrict it further. But anyway, yeah, we were happy to bring that discussion back at the next meeting.
Okay. I think that would be important. And just one other thing, before we get to zoning, I know there are a few people here that like to talk about vacation rentals, and perhaps we could open the public hearing and have them talk about that before we discuss it. Would that be possible to do?
That would be fine with me. If there's no objections, we can go ahead and do that. Does that work for staff?
Fine with me.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Let's go ahead and do that. I'm going to open the public hearing. And first speaker is Dolores Padgett.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am the president of the Coast Homers Association. We are 575 homes located off of Camino de las Maris, Vaquero, Frontera. We presently have four vacation rentals that have been licensed by the city. We are a association where we pay dues. We have CCNRs, conditions, covenant, and restrictions. And in our CCNRs, you cannot, A, have a business out of your home, and the second is our rentals are 30 days. We have been plagued with these rentals since November, especially over the holidays. The police have been at our facilities. We have one, when you talk about a five-bedroom home, over the Christmas holidays, it was in and out with 20 students, college students, that partied all day, all night. The trash was a mess, the parking was a mess. We're just saying, when you have a homeowners' association where you pay dues, where you sign an escrow, to have restrictive covenants, conditions to live there, to include getting permits signed off by the association before you can alter your residence, that we request that we be taken out of any zoning and other of the associations within San Clemente also be considered. I know that Amcor has about 14 homeowners' associations, and we do not feel that this is fair, and we are battling it with our lawyers right now with these homeowners. One of our homeowners lives in China. They cannot get a visa back. This is our worst home, that it is being rented out for three, four days. It is a five-bedroom home. It's beautiful, but it's a party house. And we would like consideration that when there are associations that have CCNRs and do not permit them, that they are not licensed at all. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So what you're basically asking is that we consider a condition attached to this use for a letter of authorization issued from the HOA prior to issuing a permit? Correct?
That would be fine, because they won't get it.
Okay, well...
That would be fine.
Some may, some may not, but that would be a good...
Yes. And we work well right now through the architectural and the planning downstairs. They do not review any plans that have not had our ACC and the association sign off on it.
All the city can simply ask the applicant, "Do you belong to any homeowner association? If yes, then do you have their consent?" If they lie about it, and if the city was brought to attention, then the license will be revoked.
As I recall, Jim, isn't this one of the things that we're looking at, like in the Title III area, as part of the process, is checking on the HOA permission on it?
That's in the TOT ordinance that we're...
It's already in the...so actually, the city council, they just had their second reading last night, in the TOT ordinance, to have that as a mechanism.
That's great.
So you're all set, as soon as that comes into effect.
You will have a problem of enforcement downtown. Parking, I mean, we had a lot of parking, but the enforcement is a difficult process.
Thank you. Next up is Tricia Matting.
Last June, Santa Barbara City Council voted unanimously to enforce its existing zoning ordinance, which, like San Clemente's, excludes vacation rentals as a permitted listed use in residential zones, stating that despite the fact that vacation rentals in our own zones paid a TOT and received a business license from Santa Barbara, they were still illegal. On December 8th, the city council stated that even though the vacation rentals are not in compliance with zoning requirements, the owners were still subject to their past TOT and business license ordinances, and that they certainly encouraged these rental operators to pay their money in advance of being contacted by the city, and resolve their tax liabilities to avoid further penalties and interest currently being imposed. On June 6th, Manhattan Beach's city council, after stating their top focus was maintaining the character of their residential neighborhoods, voted four to one to ban vacation rental in residential areas, granting a temporary retrieve of six months to registered vacation After meeting with the mayor of Manhattan Beach, after the meeting, the mayor of Manhattan Beach said, "The residential neighbor...residential nature of our community, the peace and quiet of our residents rules over someone's profits." He also said that even though commercial businesses have always been banned from Manhattan Beach's residential areas, it was granting a temporary retrieve to December 31st to those who registered, because Manhattan had granted them business license, and it was ...had collected a TOT tax, and it would only be fair. In May, Santa Monica City Council banned STLU's in all residential zones, despite the fact that they had issued business licenses and collected a TOT. Santa Monica granted a three-month retrieve...reprieve on active enforcement of the recognition, in recognition of the fact that these owners had paid a TOT tax and were issued a business Also, in addition, after the city session last, it was asked whether a stopple is doctrine, the owners will be able to...oh, forget it.
Thank you. Susan Nelson?
Thanks for letting us go. That's kind of nice. Although I like to watch your work, you're very fair, going back and forth and bantering. And so that's a nice thing, I enjoy that. So I kind of like, I still want to stay, because I can make notes on the things that you say, and then I can come back and tell you what it is, without having to watch the whole YouTube thing for another four hours, and then make notes, and then send them to you. So there was a gal last night...I'm Susan Nelson, by the way, and I'm a resident here. I've been here for 18 years. When we...I came from Mission Viejo, my husband lived here. And we started looking, actually, in North Beach, Mr. Ruin, and we thought that was a lovely area, nearby the Old Hanson Beach Club and the casino and all that, that this great opportunity came up in Southwest, and that's where we are now. Anyway, so we loved North Beach also, just that was the point. But there was a gal last night that spoke about that her rental agency, that she decided to go with, will ban them, fine them immediately, and then evict them right away. Well, that's great, but the residents are still the ones that are going to have to call the sheriffs, to get the call out there, to cause all of this to happen. And it just always falls back on us. And you're hearing about these nine or 12 houses that are the constant problems, but you're not always getting the calls, because there's that, you know, when it starts, there's that underlying anxiety, "God, do I have to call the cops? And how long is it going to take them to be here? And then I'm going to have to go through the whole interview process." And it's just, it's nerve-wracking. And then the next day, you have to deal with someone blocking your driveway, or trying to leave, like, "Oh, are we bothering you?" And your neighbors, you know how to approach. You know that this one's very direct, or this one, you kind of got to be a little bit nice. You don't know these people, so you don't know how to approach them. And usually, when they're partying and having fun, you know, they're not at their best behavior. So you don't know how to approach these people, and that causes an anxiety. So these are things that you don't really hear about. Parking? These people come in packed in cars, and the people that stay there, like, you know, suburban, you've got like, you know, eight, nine people getting out of suburban, that's great. But it's when all their friends show up in one or two cars, and then all of a sudden, there's no parking in the whole street, or they're parking in your neighbor's driveways. So that's where parking becomes an issue. And you can't...you can't enforce that. That's what's...and I'm sitting here, and I got two texts from one of my neighbors, because the house next door, they said that this lady just went blazing down the streets, speeding down the street. They're going to go put notes on her car. We have kids at the top of our street. They don't know who lives there. They don't know the streets. We're narrow streets down in Southwest, you know? And this lady, I go, "Oh, is it the black Cadillac next door?" Yep, that's the one. She went speeding down the street. When you're talking about quiet hours, the neighbors, we're all like, I mean, I'm usually like asleep by now. You know, so 10 to 7, that's like construction hours-ish, kind of, you know? But, you know, and that's...you can't put regulations on one and not the other, that's true, but all the neighbors are like asleep by 9:00. So it's not like you're really restricting, at least not in our neighborhood, they go to bed a little bit sooner. And then the insurance, the thing, too, that's...you're sitting in the backyard, and a frisbee comes over the fence. Instead of having a knock at the door, "Hey, can we come get the frisbee that just came?" These kids are climbing over your fence. And so we're staggered, we're at the bottom of a steep hill. So, you know, if you've got a retaining wall that's, you know, three feet, and then you've got your six-foot fence on top of that, that child could drop 10 feet and break their leg, and then that's my responsibility? So, and this never had to happen, because your neighbors, you could just say, "Dude, your frisbee keeps coming over the fence." And, you know, it's, again, it's an enforcement thing. That's the bottom line for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe Janus?
You know, God wired us all real differently. We all think different on different issues, and that's all okay. I think that's why God also allowed the city to get a general plan and codes and ordinances. When we don't agree with an issue, well, let me read what one of our council members wrote a while back. Said, "The general plan is often called the blueprint for different..." Said, "The general plan is often called the blueprint for development and conservation of a city. The general plan clearly represents a city's comprehensive effort to delineate a vision for its future and formulate action-oriented programs to achieve the future. The plan does indeed function as a blueprint that defines not only how San Clemente will evolve through 2025, but steps we, as a community, will take to make the visions a reality." And it goes on to say, "A general plan defines a city's vision of quality of life of the average person within the community." So my question is, are we really following the general plan, or are we getting so hung up in all this stuff, you know? And then I heard something mentioned, something about being too restrictive. Well, too restrictive for who? You know, we want your guys' help. We're residents here, we're not investors, and too restrictive? We talked about a 300 radius for housing. If the lots are 70 by 100, you could figure out, I showed you guys a print the other, a cog the other day, of all the houses affected by just one. If those lots are 70 by 100, how many of these can you have? And why would you say, "Well, you know, we'll allow that one, so you eight guys are going to have a bad time, and the guys 10 houses away, that's far enough away from the other one, are going to have an all-right time?" It's just not right. So too restrictive for who? You compared bed and breakfasts and hotels to our residential areas? They're not. And when you talked about the parking thing, the reason it was so confusing is because this is a residential area. It's not something for people to come and stay there and park, it's a single-family dwelling. So I would really hope, oh, and then the enforcement thing, if you think this is hard coming with these plans, it's going to be twice as hard to enforce it. It's just something that's unenforceable out there. We've lived next to these things, so we really, we really need your guys' help and a good recommendation, you know, it's, I know we all think differently, and, you know, and that's okay, but I think we need to think of who, too restrictive, no such thing as too restrictive for your citizens of the community. So I'd like to see them banned in all residential areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue who's here? If not, I will close the public hearing. I think the next thing that we're going to get into is zoning. It may be a good time for a short break. So let's take a break until 9:00 PM. Oh, sorry. And Adam, you're going to get us, kick us off for the zoning discussion, right?
Yes. So, last time we discussed this, we were looking at a couple options, and there was, you know, three general places that this went. One was everybody was okay with this being in mixed-use zones. And then there was kind of a break between whether people agreed that this should be also in higher-density residential zones or all residential zones. So, you know, we've discussed that, and we can continue that discussion if the commission would like. One other alternative that I'd like to throw in tonight is the potential to use, to identify visitor-serving areas as laid out in the general plan as a kind of a compromise. You know, the issues that we're facing are, one, being the coastal commission, is staff is just not confident that just allowing them in mixed-use zones is going to accomplish, is going to get the coastal commission to sign off on our land use plan, and so we feel that something else needs to be in there. If it's not the commission's desire to go to all residential, there may be a kind of a trade-off that we can look at, the visitor-serving areas of the general plan, specifically because those areas, they are discussed as being visitor-serving, providing visitor amenities, and they may lend themselves better to meeting the goals of the city and the coastal commission. I'll provide some maps here of the, of the specific areas that we're talking about. And one thing to keep in mind is that the visitor-serving areas are the mixed-use zones, and some of them have residential high in them as well. I believe there's a little bit of residential medium, but it would be specific to these geographic areas. And they would consist of the Delmar T-zone, what we call the downtown core. The blue line is the coastal zone boundary, and that's important to note, because coastals, they're looking at visitor-serving amenities in the coastal zone, and so, you know, though it would be nice to provide the, you know, this use everywhere, it may only count in the areas that are actually within the coastal zone. The second one would be the Pier Bowl area, and these maps are the focus areas as laid out in the general plan. And then the last one would be the North Beach focus area. Now, it's, we, the North El Camino Real focus area, that's a mixed-use, or I'm sorry, that's a commercial zone, and so these are allowed in that area now. But the North Beach area, the mixed-use portion, we would be able to include that as well. So that's another potential option that we could look at. And I'll, you know, I'll kind of leave it up to questions at this point.
Wayne?
You're not saying that just doing STLUs just in the visitor-serving zones, you're also saying doing it in those zones and the adjacent areas, is that correct? Which would be mixed-use zones?
The adjacent areas...
Well, that are not in color there.
That are not in color?
Yeah.
No, because the, the two real options that we're, that are, we think are viable are the all residential zones and mixed-use zones, or the higher-density residential zones and mixed-use zones.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
And if that's, the, what the visitor-serving areas are, are the North Beach, the Pier Bowl, and the downtown core areas specifically, and would not include all of the other residential within the coastal zone.
This is an overlay of all zones.
So you're, so the areas that are not in color, you're saying that they would not be allowed in those areas?
Yes. That's that option.
I think that what we're saying...
Well, wait a minute. If you're going to say that, then several of us have to recuse ourselves now.
What we're saying is, what all we're doing right now, we're not saying, we're just showing you what the general plan identifies...
Right.
...as visitor-serving areas. So in this particular, and that had to do with, you remember, in the general plan, we had several focus areas?
Right.
And the focus areas specifically were designed to accommodate visitors, you know, probably primarily on a commercial basis, you know, trying to create entertainment districts and uses that were compatible with, with the coastal commission calls tourist-serving commercial type of uses in those areas. But in the mixed-use areas, it also accommodates residential. So there were three areas, you know, that specifically talked about that as, you know, in their purpose and intent section, talked about the tourist-serving aspect, and that was North Beach, the Pier Bowl, and then the downtown. Now, adjacent to both North Beach and the Pier Bowl are high-density residential, most of this area in here is high-density residential, and then it extends out beyond this zone, high-density. And if you go to North Beach, whoops, North Beach has a little bit of high-density adjacent to it. I can't remember exactly, I know it's along here, and I think it's along here to some degree. But anyway, if those areas are included, then we need to talk about recusals, because two of you live within 500 feet of those areas.
Well, all of a sudden, this is something brand new. I'm interested in talking about the visitor-serving areas that are the focus areas that you have in color up there, but I'm also interested in talking about the areas that are not in color, because there are a number of very well-run vacation rentals that are, that are in those areas that are not in color. So if you're going to limit it just to the color areas, then I think several of us have to recuse ourselves right now.
It's a suggestion.
Well, actually not, because you're not within the color areas. We checked your, not within 500 feet of those areas, any of you.
I think with the colored areas, sort of the, the point of them is that in the general plan, since they're specifically called out, they're actually defined visitor, what visitor serving is, which includes, you know, lodging, different types of lodging and that sort of a thing. It seems like that would be a pretty good place to start to say, "Well, actually, the general plan says that we should be..."
Right.
"...probably doing something like this in those areas." And the other areas are more, you know, for the most part, more neighborhood-oriented type of things, and the general plan has a different thing to say about those sorts of things. But if we focused on, it seems like if we focused on these three areas, we're saying, well, it's visitor-serving, STLUs can occur in visitor-serving areas, the other areas are residential, that might, A, start to address the coastal commission's issues, and B, it would, you know, obviously, it wouldn't include any R1 area, but the areas, so all these areas are actually in medium and high-density areas, so it actually includes a lot of the high-density stuff that we already have in these other areas. But in the pure residential zones, we wouldn't be allowing it. So it seems like it might be a place where we, you know, more of us could stand.
Well, I think that's pretty restrictive, as far as limiting them just to these areas that are in color, because there are a number of vacation rentals that are outside of those colored areas that are very well-run, that have been vacation rentals for years and years and years and years and years. So...
I think this is a very good idea to start with the...
I'm sorry, were you through, Wayne?
Yeah.
Start with the visitor-service area. In addition to these three areas, we can certainly expand the area. For example, the Pier Bowl and the downtown T-zone can be connected, so they are a contiguous area, and then mixed-use along the whole El Camino Real. We already agreed, we have a consensus that STLU should be allowed in mixed-use zones, so those can be included into that visitor-service area. Then we can have different levels of restrictions. Within the visitor-service area, we can have a pretty liberal standard. Outside of that, we have very strict standards. So that will allow, still allow STLU in white zones, but with much more restriction.
Michael? I think you were next.
This is an interesting suggestion here, and I'd like to know what, do you know offhand, Adam, which zones are contained residential across the spectrum in, in these visitor-serving areas?
Yeah, I do. In the Pier Bowl, you have a variety of different uses, including mixed-use. You have... You have medium-density residential, but it's really small, it's just right over here on this cul-de-sac here. And then you have high-density residential, which is contained in this area here, and also up here, all the way through here. And then in North Beach, well, and then, this is all mixed-use. But some of the mixed-use does allow, some of these mixed-use zones off of what we call the downtown core area, which is the 100 and 200 block along Del Mar and the street behind it. In these areas here, it does allow standalone residential.
Jim, why didn't we include those, remind me again, the six parcels there at the bottom of the downtown quarter?
Well, this area here was removed because it's all residential now. So, I think it was actually expanded out, I don't know if this is, this is an old map.
Okay.
So, I think that we actually even expanded it to, I don't know how far up the street, but this is all residential on either side, so that was removed during the general plan process. Now, going, moving to North Beach, which way is that? North Beach, I don't think, other than these few blocks right in here, are there any residential within, and that is a residential high, zoned right there. The rest is all mixed-use. Now, you know, you guys have the ability to define the zones in any way you want. If we go this route anyway, if it doesn't correspond to, if it doesn't correspond to any particular zoning district, then likely, we're gonna have to do some kind of an overlay in order to-
So, this here, these zones were considered, and there's lots of discussion to, to define these zones as visitor-serving. So, this is, these are established?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Michael?
Well, I, I think I'd like to start by saying that, Adam, you said, "Well, the general plan talks about mixed-use as the only area for, for this kind of use or overnight lodging," or however you wanted to find it. But the way I read that general plan, that's not exactly true, that there's some commercial areas that are listed. I believe that there's four or five zones in the general plan that specifically say lodging or overnight accommodations, very clear. In none of the residential zones in this, in the general plan, in none of them, there is any mention of lodging or overnight lodging or, or anything like that, okay? That's the general plan, that's the way it's written. But you're showing here, I think, is a really good approach, and I'm glad to see it, because I think that it reflects that thinking, to the most part. I would be concerned only that if there was things in those areas that were zones that could affect residential zones negatively, that I would wanna kind of snip them out of there or look at it. But I think the intent of that is copacetic with the general plan, it's copacetic with visitor orientation. I think those are the kind of areas that make sense versus plunking these things down into, into single-family residences, which, you know, we're hearing over and over again, it's just not gonna work. So, I like this, and I think that it would be something good to analyze it in more detail. The pier Bowl may have some other expansions to it in, in high-residential areas that might make sense, although I'm, I'm not for any R zoning at all for this program. But given the fact that they're maybe so high that it lends itself to maybe being a reasonable thing, it may lend itself to being a existing condition of suitable short-term residential rental, too, you know, it could be true. But what I'm really afraid of is that any of these things that we're looking at, we have to be careful that we don't cut into the single-family residential load density with homeowners, we're, we're hearing over and over again, that doesn't, that doesn't work. So, I would just like to say that I think this is supportive of where I'm coming from, it's supportive of the general plan, and I think geographically, it makes a lot of sense. So, I think it's a great place to take a look at, at working on it instead of just kind of doing broad-brush zoning sweeps. Appreciate it, too, thank you.
Hey, Bart, did you wanna go?
No, this is a refreshing thing to look at. What about south, uh, South El Camino Real? That's-
The west of the five and east of the five.
Yeah, like where, what is it, Surfers Row or whatever it is, those units. Would that fall into an area that might be-
It's a mixed-use area that you can consider, sure. But I don't think, we carved out these areas specifically because they were more of the tourist-oriented, you know-
Right.
-purpose and intense sections of the general plan. But the other area does have, you know, that's south, south end of El Camino Real is kind of, you know, with the, remember the San Luis Obispo students and kind of creating a new atmosphere down there, and especially with the surf culture down there, you know, it's known as the surf town.
It might resurrect and get some improvement down there.
It might, you know, I think you can make a case for that down that way.
And then, as far as Wayne's concerned, depending on how it goes with amortization or sale of units and all, it might resolve some of the issues you have with existing operations that are good. If it's basically no amortization, if, that might be something we can discuss where those operators might be protected.
I think it's important to understand that there are a lot of very good operators in those areas that are not in color. And they've been around for a long, long time. And somehow, we have to make accommodations for that. We really do. And again, I, I'm probably more accommodating than a lot of people with regard to vacation rentals in, in mixed-use. I've been, you know, on my street there are a number, so I've become accommodating to them over a period of time. But, and some of them are good, some of them are not so good. But I think it's important that the ones that are good are, are, are allowed to continue to operate. I really do. And I, I see there that, for example, there's a, I, I know of several people that own four units that, that rent out, you know, a couple of the units as vacation rentals, and they have been there for a long, long time. So, it, it, it's nice to see the visitor-serving, and that's what I was gonna bring up tonight with, because, because the general plan is our constitution and it's our, it's our blueprint. And, and it says in our, in the general plan that these areas are visitor-serving. In the residential, single-family, it does not say that they are visitor-serving. It doesn't say that in there. So, we have to take a look at what our general plan is and not to try to redefine our general plan. But I am concerned about the ones that have been operating for a long, long time in, in mixed-use.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll go, I'll join. I, I like this, too, this is, I've been looking into this in the last week, I kind of curled up with my general plan this week and, you know, looked at some things. I, I know that there might be some areas close by or adjacent to these that it might make sense to incorporate. I, I think sort of after the fact, it would be a good thing to do. I would hesitate to add or remove anything from these areas in our discussions because this is what was identified in the general plan, there was lots and lots of discussion, and I wouldn't wanna, wouldn't wanna risk unintended consequences by not giving a, essentially, a general plan update is what, amendment is what would be required to move these around. So, so I think kind of looking at these, sort of at the, at the first pass, possibly, if we think that there are some other areas, you know, I think maybe fronting the Oldie Hanson, for instance, at North Beach might be an area to consider, there might be some places adjacent to the Pier Bowl worth considering because they've been there a long time and, you know, and they're clearly visitor-serving, and, and it would make sense to essentially do an amendment to modify the maps. But that would be something I think that we should, you know, then could direct staff to do to take a look and, and present to us the ideas for our general plan amendment, you know, later on. But I think for our purposes and what we've been talking about and the timeline, the runway that we have, I like this because all these, the general plan, all this white area, the general plan says is residential, and then it's got specific things about residential, that it's, you know, you know, supports neighborhood character, you know, we've all, you know, gone all over that. So, this gives us kind of a nice way, I think, to cut this, and then we can, you know, we can look at some of the other issues like, you know, owner-occupied and that kind of a thing. And it lets us move forward and declare that, you know, actually to follow the general plan, because as visitor-serving areas, the more I was reading it, the more I was feeling like we almost have to allow STLUs in these areas-
Right, right.
...because of the way that the general plan has defined these and the way it defines visitor-serving. So, so anyway, I, I like the idea of, I think we've got probably a lot more discussion beyond tonight. In fact, Don had mentioned this early on last week, although we didn't get a chance to talk, talk, talk about it last week. But I kind of like the idea of, you know, looking into this further and, and seeing, you know, what this might do with our zoning in terms of like the, the nature of STLUs as we've been talking about them so far. Michael?
Okay, yeah, a couple of things. So, I'm looking at this, this area in green here, and I'm looking at, trying to identify what each parcel has on it by recollection, wondering how many opportunities there really are in these areas, mostly commercial, I mean, there could be some mixed-use. So, just that to consider as it, you know, as it looks overall, how many does that really mean? How many opportunities will, will there be in the city for folks to come and visit and stay in an STLU? That aside, I, I agree with, with you, I think this is, it's worth talking about and looking at a little bit closer. I like the fact that these are established visitor-serving areas, I think it just makes sense. And it addresses some of the concerns we have in residential, not residential, in some residential and not in others. We have Commissioner Igleson mentioned some good operators. I also believe that we should give reasonable opportunity to others to be good operators, too, and not just have islands of good operators that are here today, they may not be here tomorrow, but their permit would be good for a year, I understand that, so that could all change. But I would, I would not be comfortable with isolating certain parcels and not others within the same zoning district. I just, it doesn't work well for me, it doesn't seem fair at all. But, you know, so again, it's either, I'm gonna say this now, and I'm probably gonna say it later, but I wanna read this to you. I, I believe that we either have an outright ban on, on this in residential zones, just across the board, or we allow it in all residential zones. I, I said this before, and I, I believe that we can regulate these things accordingly. We can, we can really, and we have staff done a phenomenal time on, on doing just that and just distilling this down to a mechanism that we would have to regulate these things with some minor tweaks. The one striker out, I was thinking more like three, maybe two would be reasonable, even one, one chance, they're done. You know, there's not a problem with that, you know. I, I think that right there is, is important. It's gonna be a very powerful tool to use if we opt to allow these in residential zones. So, it's my belief that the community is a dynamic concept and that we should consider using fair zoning regulation as a dynamic and adaptable mechanism to create and sustain our community in a balanced way. Okay? The fact is that STLUs are, you know, maybe a smaller component, but still a component of our fabric. They're here, they're here today, and we're existing now, we're trying to find a way to make it, you know, a balanced, a balanced existence. And I think, you know, these uses are, they're very, very scaled, they're just really very scaled versions of hotels. And regulating these things as hotels might be difficult, but considering that these are non-residential uses, they really should be regulated and accordingly. So, regarding the general plan consistency, it's my interpretation of the general plan that, you know, proper regulation of STLUs can ensure that we retain and potentially enhance established residential neighborhoods at all densities. The general plan requires that we establish and maintain a balance of uses that provides a diversity of residential neighborhoods and housing opportunities. It could be argued that allowing appropriately-regulated STLUs can contribute to the fiscal health of the city. Further, allowing STLUs preserves and enhances access to coastal resources, recreation, and amenities for city visitors. Okay? So, I think for those reasons, allowing STLUs in all residential zones meets the objective of the general plan in that regard. I think our city founders' vision of a place where people can live together more pleasantly than any other place in America, that was said by one of the councilmen, and I believe that, you know, and I believe that offering opportunities for visitors to come to our city and enjoy a short stay in a comfortable setting within the many diverse residential areas in San Clemente can be a good thing if appropriately-regulated. That's my thoughts on this. So, I came in tonight thinking it's gonna, it's gotta be an either-or. Either all in residential in all zones, or it's not. But this here is a new dynamic, and I agree that it, it really deserves some further exploration and possible expansion into the Surfers Row area. I think that, that makes sense, makes a lot of sense. So, that's my, that's my thoughts at this time.
Okay, Bart?
Okay, Michael was very eloquent with what he said, and I'm, I'm a firm believer, you can't really regulate it within the residential areas. And my whole position is based on routine. You'd be in your house, you know every sound that goes on, you know every car that comes up and down the street, you know everybody who leaves at 5:30 in the morning and closes your door, you hear them. After you've lived there a while, you're accustomed to them. You bring in short-term rentals, maybe they're not partying there, maybe they're going to the bars. They come in at 2 o'clock, three cars are there, the doors are slamming, it's an imposition on you, you hear it. And every neighborhood has its own rhythm and all, you get to know it, you're very comfortable with it, and you're introducing noise, traffic, whatever, that is, you're not accustomed to, just like the train when it goes by. You hear it the first month or two, you get accustomed to it, you don't hear it anymore. But when it comes at an odd hour, you're darn well sure you, you hear it. And so, I really don't think the, the worst of the vacation rentals fit in residential zones. Sure, if a house is there, it has no partying, and it's a family, whatever, it can work. But we're talking about, I think even the vacation hunter said it's 1% or 2% of the homes. Well, we're worried more about the 99% as far as their residents go. So, I love this idea, I see some problems with it as far as we couldn't, we had some heated discussions on mixed-use and transition to residential zones, these all back up on residential zones. Unless we are more accommodating, it's gonna be hard to get anything approved that backs up to a residential zone. So, I think maybe it does need to be tweaked a little bit to make work, but I think this is a refreshing approach. I think the fact it is visitor-oriented is excellent. The purple area seems more appropriate than the green area, particularly on the south side. But it can be zoned that way, and I think this can be controlled, this can be monitored. Regulations, like everyone has spoke about, we don't do a good job in enforcing them. And if there's a complaint, the problem's already occurred. We didn't stop a problem from occurring, we're just reacting, and that's a big concern of mine. I'm not opposed to the high-density areas. I think if it's a good high-density construction, there are actually soundproof between units, et cetera. And it can work. Houses aren't. And we still have houses all around that have single-pane windows, so any little noise, any door slamming in the neighborhood's gonna appear, so I think this is a refreshing approach, and I think it could be made to work, it would solve the coastal commission issues, and I think we should explore it.
To add, thank you, that's, this is a good conversation. I like it when it goes this way. And I just wanted to reiterate that I believe that we should really seriously consider all residential zones. And when we parse out a single-family, we, we now are telling folks that live in higher-density that, "Well, you're different." So, consider the families that live in higher-density, and they're gonna be closer to this perceived negative use. So, how is that better? I just, I don't, I don't, I don't understand how folks- I just, I don't, I don't, I don't understand how folks can, I just, I don't see the logic there.
Well, it's the same as any condo in a downtown. That's different than a single-family residence.
Sure is. Zone different.
It's zone different. The high-density, look at it more as a condo in an urban environment rather than a suburban environment. And yes, you're going to get some noise, you're going to get some things, that's, I don't want to say the price you pay, but that is the reality, that if you live in downtown New York, you accept certain things. Other people live out of the city because they don't like that. So, but there's always two points of view. I would not want to live next to a timeshare or a vacation rental. And I don't see, in a residential area, I'd want specifically to be away from them and I'd be a hypocrite to say they're okay because I don't, I don't want it next to my house.
Sen?
Yes. Well, regarding the compatibility between the short-term lodging units and the residential use, we have to remember that historically and traditionally, lodging units has a very close relationship to residential uses. You go to a rural area, some lodging, some hotels are called a roadhouse, those are converted from a traditional house. And they're not as far as commercial related to residential. So they are, we consider them business use or commercial use, but then they're not as bad as a pure retail. So there are some compatibility between the lodging units and residential units. The only difference, the key difference is the short term, it's transient. People stay there for shorter time, so they're a higher turnover. But other than that, they're very close, they're very similar to residential use. So that's something to consider. And in our zoning, E and B is allowed with a CUP. So for, just for that reason, I think the short-term rental, the STLU should be allowed in all residential zones. That also address the, some of the issues with existing business. And then also if we look at the south part of the town, in the coastal zone, starting from, from the pier boat toward the south end, there isn't many, within that coastal zone, there isn't many high-density. So we, if we exclude low-density residential, then for the south part of the coastal zone, we don't have much opportunities for the visitor. We're talking about some area around the state park, once we go beyond the pier, most majority of the land is low-density residential. That's another reason to allow, to continue to allow short-term lodging units in all residential zones, not just the visitor service area. The visitor service area is a very good idea. I believe it will eventually be an overlay because it cannot be exactly the same boundary as the focus area. There are some, some areas we want to add to it or maybe subtract it from that, depending on the particular circumstance. Easily I can see that our community are a mixed-use zone to be added to that visitor use area. So with that, I, you know, I in full faith support Commissioner Blackwell's position.
Wayne?
The reason we have a general plan and the reason we are planning commissioners is because we have to understand that not all areas are the same. And that's why we have zoning. That's why zoning is different for a single-family, it's different for residential high, residential medium, that type of thing. We have zoning to take care of those things. Otherwise, we'd become like Texas where you could have a factory next to you. But we have zoning here. And our general plan again is our constitution. It is our blueprint. And it says in there that there are certain areas that are visitor-serving. It does not say in the general plan that in fact residential is visitor-serving. So again, it just, it just amazes me to hear that we should have it in all residential zones because they're not all treated equally. They are zoned differently and zoned differently for specific reasons. But I would like to see, I have a couple of things here, Jim. I would like to see on the, on the visitor-serving outlay that you have there, red dots as to how many vacation rentals we actually have currently in those areas. And if in fact we are going to have enough of vacation rentals to satisfy the Coastal Commission by just limiting those to the visitor servings and not into other areas. So I think it's important to take a look at that because we could, we could say, okay, just do it in the visitor-serving zones, areas there, which is part of our general plan. But are we going to have enough to satisfy the Coastal Commission? Because we don't want to make all of these assumptions at this point and have the Coastal Commission come back to us and say, you don't have enough. You know?
One thing to consider is there's a, there's that different animal we haven't talked about yet, which is the owner-occupied elements, yeah?
I just wanted to let you know that our IT group did provide maps of each, we didn't do it for these visitor-serving zones because we didn't, just came up with it.
Right, right.
We have it for the high-density, the medium-density, the low-density and the coastal zone. So I'll forward that to you for, you know, your consideration so you can see it. And then we don't have, I don't know if we have it yet for the mixed use. Did you do it for the mixed use yet?
I, no.
But anyway, you know, ironically, the place that fits the easiest, you know, right now the distribution is the lowest in the mixed-use zones. But we'll, we'll try and get all that information to you by the next meeting.
Well, mixed-use zoning is not well-developed. That's exactly the area we want to guide those investment toward. And we'll tell them, if you want to build a short-term rental, a short-term lodging unit, go to our mixed-use zone and we'll give you more flexible standards.
Well, let me say something to what you said and Wayne, you know, I think we agree a lot on this, but, you know, not completely unfortunately, but it's, you know, I agree with you, this is, general plan's our blueprint. It says these are visitor-serving zones, we have to be sensitive to that. It says these are our residential zones, we have to be sensitive to that. And yeah, they're different zones, high, medium, low density, but they're all residential. And residential means you, you know, that, that a commercial use is incompatible, that's why we have commercial zones and mixed-use zones and that sort of a thing. So I, I am concerned, as I was going through the general plan again, I actually was getting more concerned about STLUs as we've been speaking about them so far, the non-owner-occupied STLUs, as we've been focusing on those. How, how that is, I've been seeing that as less and less compatible, or I should say, more difficult to make compatible. Because even if you have a lot of standards in them where you say, okay, you have to have more parking and, you know, they're so far distant from each other, all that's good, all that would be an improvement. But in the end, you're also have, you also have these spots, right? And where I live, I think there's eight within 100 yards of me where there aren't neighbors. There are, you know, these vacation rentals. And when you have neighbors, you've got, you know, that neighborhood experience, that opportunity, someone you meet, someone you talk about what's going on in the neighborhood, what's going on in the community, someone who maybe you get to know and you exchange keys in case, you know, you lock yourself out when you're running, all that sort of neighborly stuff. And there's less opportunity for that when there starts to be more commercial. Now maybe if they're spread out enough, you know, it's kind of a low enough density where it would, you know, we can make it compatible. But it's, but it's tough. And I think that, that's why I kind of like this idea of the visitor-serving areas because it puts it in those areas. Now we've got people, like you say, they're good operators. I think that there's some people who are like around the Boca de la Playa area down in North Beach. And, you know, that's kind of a, that sure still has a feel of visitor-serving, even though it's not, you know, our general plan is visitor-serving at the moment. But we can amortize and say, well, there's, you know, whatever, if we say 18 months or two years, whatever we say for that. And that should give us ample time to, you know, sit down and say, all right, do we need to, you know, have a general plan amendment to modify these? Or some of them we might not have to, the people in, if I'm not mistaken, the people on Boca de la Playa that I'm thinking of, they, they live there in those units. And we haven't kind of talked about how we want to treat that, but that might, you know, that might be a solution for them right there without even having to worry about amortization. But it sounds like amongst, amongst the group, we seem to be kind of positive at least in looking, looking at this more. Is that fair?
Yes.
So, so based on that, Jim, you know, what do you feel our next steps are? Do you think, you know, is there more conversation you need or more information or do you want to go off and think about some things?
I think you provided us, I think you provided us great direction tonight in all the categories. And so that gives us an opportunity, I think, to even begin to draft an ordinance with some of the concepts in it. For the next meeting, we'll have something and we'll give you some choices with land uses based on your recommendations tonight, your discussion.
Okay. Then is there, I'm sorry, was there another?
No.
Okay. Adam, was there any, anything else you wanted to go over on this item?
Nope. That was it.
Very good. Then staff has recommended we continue this item to our next meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we continue this item to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be when?
It's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
No, it's not, as a matter of fact. Right. And to our next meeting, which will be the 24th of March. February. I don't know.
Second. Okay. Motion by Wayne, second by Sen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So the next item is new business, of which we have none. And after that is old business, of which we have none. We are up to reports of commissioners and staff. Does anyone have anything they need to report from Coastal or anything else?
Yes. I'd like to report on the Coastal Advisory Committee meeting that occurred on February 11. The meeting started with a presentation by the San Clemente High School Environmental Science class, and they came in to report on the process and procedures for ocean water testing as allowed to them by our environmental grant funding program. So we had a room full of enthusiastic students that were very much into the science component relative to testing bacterial levels in our ocean, which I was thinking back to when I was that age and I think a number of us up there were sort of taken back by the high degree of professionalism content. It was amazing, it really was amazing. And I, I hope that program continues for them. We had a, as part of that presentation, there was a, and I want to put this into the record, that, that the group cited resources for water pollution levels that can be found on the surf rider.org website. So one could access that and access some of the testing data, which is a nice alternative resource to find bacterial counts at the various beaches here in town.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that a, is that like a static thing, like they do put it up every month or is it dynamic? Is there like constant reporting on that?
Constant reporting.
Oh, wow.
Surf Rider maintains, you know, a mechanism to do that. And next we had a presentation by Tom Bonniget, who was there in person, and he sort of provided an update on the sand replenishment project that's occurring. And some of the highlights of that summary, the next steps are the design phase with Army Corps plan to get into how it's going to be implemented. And for those that didn't know, that project spans about 3,400 feet from Linda Lane down to T Street, about 50 feet wide. And it's a, it's a big, big project that would likely be completed in late 2018, early 2019, which is nice, we see some light at the end of the tunnel on that one. The lifespan is anticipated to be approximately five to six years. So the, there'll be some erosion anticipated and, you know, an overall lifespan of five to six years, but we won't know until we get into it and really see what happens. Just for, just for your information, 50 years' worth of sand replenishment programs back-to-back would cost us about $100 million. So that's a real number, I thought that was interesting. The CAC did make a recommendation to City Council to proceed with funding that is necessary to complete the design phase with the Army Corps project, as mentioned, and to consider funding opportunistic sand replenishment in the North Beach area, which, and there was discussion on that as, as that being more of a priority, considering the energy that's being vested in the North Beach revitalization. I think it's a great idea, the train station is there, I think that would be in this.
Well, TLC for North Beach is always nice.
Right, there you go. So that's exciting things that are happening. Upcoming agenda items, again, the report on the pier maintenance and repair, that report is due any day. In fact, that was provided to us by Mary Von Drack, that the report for the pier maintenance and repair, as well as the Trafalgar Canyon Outlet Pre-Design Project reports would be both coming in any day now. So we hope to see, see that one come to the table for a discussion. And then finally, a discussion on muted parking hours and fees. So there's some attention and some, potentially some energy invested in that area as a way to increase revenue for the city. And our next meeting is going to occur on March 10th at 7:00 PM in the Ole Hansen Fireside Room.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports from the commissioners? If not, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn? It is, it's at the very end of your agenda.
I move we adjourn to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on February 24th, 2016, in Council Chambers at City Hall located 100 Avatida Presidio, San Clemente, California. Motion by Bart, second by Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.